Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for Monday, October the 10th, 2015. As usual, we would like to start with a moment's time. With the exception of some power outages in a few trees, I believe we are, in comparison to everyone else, very, very lucky. And I would like to acknowledge that at the beginning of this meeting because it's watching the news and watching the floods that are just beginning to happen down East, it is abundantly clear that we are very fortunate. Jay Farrell?
Would everyone rise to the plate? Flagging the flagrant. The United States of America, with your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have our agenda before us? Are there any amendments to the agenda or motions to postpone anything, modifications?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the inclusion of the modifications to the minutes that I think you have in front of you that's highlighted by our work with Alice on today.
I didn't realize this was here. I had a couple of just little, little things online. I thought we'd add the date of the meeting of the joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education here on the back. I didn't see that date anywhere. And that staff would do the installation of the downtown kiosks in order to keep costs down. I think we had talked about that. And then yours are. Right. Okay. Clarifying the fire and police and changing the definition of the quorum for the advisory committee.
Right. And point of order, if, in what sequence would we take this if we wanted to move an agenda item from the consent item agenda to later?
You would simply make a motion to take that agenda item off?
There's a motion already.
Be happy to amend my motion.
Okay.
Yep.
We have another item that needs to be removed. Mr. Brian Grusbeck?
The applicant, thanks. The applicant for item number three under consent agenda is requesting to remove the setting of that public hearing or the action that would set that public hearing. So there's no, there's no proposed date yet for placing that back on the agenda.
Okay. So what we've done is we've removed the minutes for tweaking under item one and we're removing item three in its entirety. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those amendments?
And move item five to new business, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To new business.
All right. Item five to new business. And I guess the minutes, are they old? Since there's no old business, why don't we put it there? With those amendments, those changes, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with left off?
Second.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. There is no one signed up under the public expression speakers. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak on a matter which is not on today's Then we shall go then to, in your package is a resolution thanking those people involved in the creation of and funding of the Page Vernon Park. This is a resolution which comes to you by virtue of a suggestion by Michael Fiocco, who was greatly involved in that. And is there, is there discussion on the resolution? This is the first anniversary of the opening of this park. And there were, not only was the Vernon family very generous in their gift of the land for the park, but also there were a number of people who were contributors, both individuals, a trust, and corporations that helped fund the park.
Jim had hoped he couldn't be here tonight, but he is out in town, so we're going to make it. But he was very thankful for recognition of the anniversary and has spent time in the park. And he's quite happy with, with the facility and happy to know that Pittsburgh was appreciative of it. So heartfelt thank you from Jim.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Under mayor updates, there was not a great deal this past two weeks. The 27th of September, I attended, as did you all, various sections of the Chatham Park and Design Sherret. And then two days later, on the 29th, we had our joint school county town meeting at which all of us were present. And on the 5th, I missed, and I admitted to Jeff Jones that I missed the first presentation of the Chatham Park Advisory Committee presentation by Chatham Park itself. It was on the parking and permitting and.
Phasing.
Phasing, thank you. So one of the things that somewhat escaped me, I've missed a couple of meetings here lately, and I thought might be organizational tool, is to create an agenda of looking ahead so that we have the dates of the meetings that the U D O is going to be considered. We have the dates of the meeting ongoing for the advisory committee. We have various other things that are intermixed in there, the Christmas parade and all of that. And so if, if there's no objection, I'd like to start, and I talked to Brian Grusbeck about it, start a looking ahead agenda so that we sort of have a feeling of what's on and coming up so that we don't end up with meetings that go until 1:00 in the morning and then some of those that end up at 7:30. So that way maybe we can manage the agenda a little bit better. So.
Wonderful idea.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank Michael Fiocco, who had indicated that might be a good organizational tool. That brings us into, are there commissioner updates on any of the organizations, fairgrounds, downtown, Triangle J, Main Street, or climate change?
I'll mention that P B A is meeting this Wednesday morning as well as the Main Street Design Committee. I'll be attending both of those meetings. And the committee of the Main Street program in its entirety is meeting tomorrow night.
Will you throw out, we also have, they picked dates for what's the first district area date and they've made a holiday. We had it last year.
And we can add that to our calendar of upcoming things. Okay. Will you bring up the issue of the kiosks when you go to Main Street?
Yes.
Anything else, any other reports? And we have, under new business, we have the first item that we have pulled off of the concession.
Old business, remove minutes to old business.
Sorry. Yeah. Removed minutes to old business is the only item. Okay?
Old. This item to old business.
Did we put it to old? Okay.
I suggested new, but yeah.
He suggested old because there was nothing else that was in the column.
Okay. Well, let's take the minutes first. The amendments that we wish to make would be the ones I mentioned on page five, Alice, that under the paragraph that says, he said any installations downtown would need to be performed with special care, given the prevalence of varied infrastructure. And I just wanted to add that staff would do the installation as an economy move, but also because they would know where the infrastructure issues might be. That, the gist of what we said. And then just adding the date on page 11 on the joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education. The date was 9/29/16. Michael Fiocco?
Well, I wanted to include from the minutes that I had asked if the police and the fire department were looking at the additional elements. And it was stated that they would be. So I thought that was an important item because they're an important part of the review. And the other item that I mentioned was that the ordinance establishing the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee years ago had eight members and stated that five members was a quorum. It was subsequently reduced to six, but the quorum remained at five. We're back up to seven and the quorum remains at five. So the suggestion was that it just be a majority. And so we added that discussion to the minutes.
Those changes or amendments, is there further discussion of the minutes or any further amendments? Is there a motion to make those adjustments?
So move. Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to the item that we pulled, number five, approve ordinance establishing capital project budget for the Sanford Forest Main.
So I asked that this item be moved on the agenda because I think that I have any specific concerns about not approving the funding of this budget amendment. But I sense that there are various swirling concerns on the board about the Forest Main project and how it fits in with town's current sewage treatment facilities and what's pending, what's been proposed, and where we might go in future. And so I just basically wanted to open it up for discussion. Are others concerned about the Forest Main project? Just leave it that.
I'll go ahead and add along with John, I am concerned, one problem that I have is, excuse my language, exclusivity of this project. It's going to be hard for me to give up our sewer rights. I've been doing some reading more than I have done in years. And I'm really concerned regarding the Chatham Park wastewater treatment plant, the discharge that's going there. I mean, this is a lot of information coming to us at one time. I hope we're not getting in it too fast.
I have a same concern about the permit and the current wastewater treatment facility. And I think we'll go more in depth, I guess, at our, at our utilities meeting, but that does concern me a lot.
Well, I think Mr. Grusbeck has expressed a preference that we should focus on kind of the engineering and the technical aspect, technical aspects at our utilities workshop, which was one of the reasons why I saw this as an opportunity for us to think about this in the policy context. And perhaps to pose some questions about the finance and revenue implications. I'm similarly concerned about exclusivity, as I've said before. What it boils down to is a lot of vague concerns about what risks this, these, this project exclusivity terms pose to current ratepayers, to the town, and to our growth prospects in future. And, you know, I can, I tried to kind of brainstorm what the risks are, but then I stopped myself and I realized that's, I'm not the expert. And so one of the things that I'd like to ask is, is if the board agrees, is ask staff, ask Mr. Grusbeck to prepare a memo detailing risks from his perspective, from staff's perspective, and either stop there or perhaps even address, address those risks.
Well, I know we went through a pretty lengthy process with the engineering review and report, pros and cons, and financial analysis. And while it is clear we have an immediate need for additional capacity, immediate, without, I mean, it won't be long before we have to shut down new developments. And so the analysis, as I recall, is that it's far more cost effective to do the Forest Main than it is to try and build a new plant. Granted, we've got an allocation through our N P D S permit for 3.22 million gallons discharge, I think it's 125, and Robeson, the remainder going to the Hall. That project was upwards of $30 million. I think the analysis also indicated that because the N P D S permit identified the location of the plant being an existing plant, and in fact, P E R, with all the floodplain issues surrounding it in the adjoining neighborhoods, that there probably wasn't a footprint there to do it. So that was another complicating factor. So as we moved through this process, looking at all the variables, it kept pointing to the Sanford option, that's a pretty good option. The, I don't, I don't use the word exclusive. What I do say is that we would be making a commitment to Sanford, just as they would be making a commitment to us. And we both need to be able to rely on each other or the commitment's no good. And we can't afford to invest $18 million in something we can't rely on. Can't do that, to be honest. So I don't think of it as exclusivity. I think what they're saying is in order for us to be able to set aside this amount of capacity in our plant, we need to know from you that you will send it to us and that you won't do something in your municipality and exclude us and expect us to hold on to that capacity for you. So as I understand it, it is they expect us to send the first 2 million gallons to them and says nothing about going beyond that, to which, if we are sending 2 million to them, we have reserved 3.22 discharge permit. Now we're up to 5 million gallons. Projections are for Chatham Park alone, I think we're 4.4 million gallons a day at buildup. So I think Sanford options, it seems to have a lot going for it. And we did spend a lot of time trying to figure it out. Way to go.
Would it be possible to get copies of that analysis process that we went through just so that when we have this workshop that we can review and say it again?
Absolutely. I think, I think to receive those a year ago now and we discussed it, we can certainly resend those. If I could just say something about the agenda item in particular, I promise I won't go into any technical about those. The intention of putting this on the consent agenda was to approve some monies from our capital budget in order to allow Wooton to be paid for some preliminary work on some metal of the P E R. The contract that you see in there is very specific language to a preferred option, but whatever option you guys come up with, regardless of the discussion that takes place tonight, tomorrow, or on Thursday night, or any night after that, Wooton still needs to be paid for the work preparing these documents that have to go to the state regardless of whatever treatments. That was the intent of the request for the budget amendment. It was not to discuss the philosophy, you know, the philosophy of wastewater treatment and how we're going about it and that sort of thing. So that's why it was put on the consent agenda is, you know, mainly to set the project budget. This would be essentially the start of a project budget and to allow a mechanism, a financial mechanism for Wooton to get paid for their work. And that's all it is. And I don't, and you guys can continue with this discussion tonight or continue it on Thursday. That's fine, however you want to do it. But that's all the intention of this budget item was intended to do. And as far as actually preparing a memo, a staff memo or what have you, I could think of actually no memo that I, and I'd rather write that memo than just about any other memo right now because it's simply the most important thing that's facing this town over the course of the next few years. I mean, the town's been working out for eight years prior to this and it hasn't been able to do anything. And what we have right now is an opportunity to get us through the first two M G D. We can't expand our current plant. The life of our current plant is, is going to be, you know, has a limited timeframe in terms of what it can do on its own. So it's going to take some discussion to get through some of these things. And that's what we intend to do on Thursday. After that, after you guys have had a chance to go through some of the technical aspects of it, somewhat, you know, if you guys have a direction on where you want to go from that, we have Wooton also looking at different financial options that are related to this or related to our current operations that can kind of put things in perspective as far as our ratepayers and how we, you know, and how we work with that moving forward and things of that nature. So I, if I had to do it, I was telling Mayor Perry this, if I had to do it over again, I really would have liked to have scooted the technical discussion up to an earlier date. I couldn't get people to the table that quickly, rather than going over the agreement right off. Because I don't think that agreement made as much sense to you guys without having some technical background and some financial background to really understand the agreement. So I, you know, if there's anything of hindsight that I'd like to do over, we could do that. But tonight, all we're looking for is just to establish a project budget, the means for Wooton to get paid for some of the work that they're going to do. And that, that work could be taking different directions based on your climate.
And I appreciate the intent, you reminding us of the intent. I think all of us have been pulling out, I know I have, my big folder that says sewer and trying to revisit because, because I was in on those meetings, but I was not up to the level of, and I'm still perhaps not up to the level of knowledge. And so I have this huge list of questions, but I'm not sure who to be asking to.
We're going to put those people on Friday, on Thursday, as I would hope.
I do know this. I do know that it is virtually gold, our N P D S permit. And so I appreciate what you're saying, Pamela Baldwin, about the idea of letting, of letting anything come in the way of our full utilization of that, of that permit. I understand that you talk about a history, millions of dollars or a lot of money and a lot of time went into the preparation of the documents that gave us that permit. And that's just one. So I'll, I've got my folder, but I'll bring it Thursday night. Is there, is there further leaving that we would like to do or, I guess one of my questions is, if we've, if we've got a lot of questions about Thursday, are we going to be able to do both the elevated tank and the Forest Main as far as being able to get all of that in, in one meeting?
Let's start with the Forest Main and see where we end up.
I think the purpose with the elevated tank is there, that, that concept in its entirety was essentially approved about a year ago at this time. And they're ready to begin construction on it. So we've got to, we, that, that overview of the elevated tank and the Northside Water System improvements are really to get board and staff and, and Chatham Park really on the same page about what's going to be happening moving forward, why it's happening, what's going to be happening moving forward. So that discussion, if that discussion doesn't take place on Thursday, it's got to take place fairly soon because we need to, we need to start construction on that.
Don't we also have a November 1st deadline with respect to submittals to the state regarding the Forest Main?
There's no, the, the original deadline was set as November 1st. The state, the state realizes that there could be some more discussion that you guys need to have on this. So my, my discussion with, with Wooton to this point has been the November 1st. And they, the state told us this at the last meeting that we had in Raleigh, that, that they could be a little bit flexible on that. They were setting, I think, to kind of keep the discussion moving forward because they know we have a history with this and they know how time consuming these things can be. So if we need to push that November 1st date, it's my understanding we can push that a bit.
Well, thank you for that background and insight. And I'll say again, I think I said, as I kicked off the discussion, I don't have concerns specific to this budget amendment. I don't have any reason to vote against it or not support it, but this is an opportunity for us to have a very important discussion. I'm very mindful of the profound need for additional sewer capacity. I have been for, since the first day that I started living in town, I've been hearing from local business owners about the frustrations regarding our lack of sewer capacity during the formal moratorium. And since then, I have no intention of delaying the Forest Main to Sanford, but I have said before and I'll say again, I'm concerned that we're focusing exclusively on this Forest Main, Sanford Forest Main, and not on Phase Two. My understanding from, and help me with my recollection, because my memory is poor sometimes, but at the utilities workshop last year, I understood that there were a number of options proposed, a number of options proposed as to how Town of Pittsburgh might proceed on its own and then how it might proceed in collaboration with Chatham Park, Chatham Park investors. And I believe that there was no formal decision made at, at that workshop. I don't recall a formal decision being made until staff were given the go-ahead to submit an application to the state revolving loan fund. And at that time, the idea was that we were proceeding with two projects, with Forest Main and some work at the Small Street Surgery Plant. Is that accurate, an accurate recollection?
I can answer that whenever you guys are done talking.
And, and the budget for the, for the state loan allocated a certain amount for plant upgrades as well as the Forest Main. So it was, it was clear that at that point it was two pronged. And that then the, and that at a certain point in time, and I remember the charts, I was just trying to flip through and see if I could find them, to, to then proceed toward a, some sort of joint treatment facility, which would have to come online at a later time. So a regional plant. So.
Does it mind me to pick that up now?
Yes, please.
The, the option that was submitted, you are correct, the option that was submitted and approved, noted as intense as planned, was based on allowing, making upgrades to our existing plant and allowing for some treatment to continue to take place at our existing plant. In subsequent discussions with, with the town or the city of Sanford, it became apparent that Sanford, in order to treat our wastewater in a more efficient, cost-effective manner, needed some, needed as much flow as early as possible. needed some, needed as much flow as early as possible. If we were to continue treating water at our plant over the long term, over the term of that 2.0 MGD, then it wouldn't be able to be done in a cost-effective manner without at some point in time visiting the option or the necessity to not use our plant solely as a treatment option. So the plan has evolved somewhat since then. Not then, it has, we have not gone forward on the basis of what you have right now and what we've been talking about to this point. You guys would still need to review that option and then by a resolution approve it if you so choose. Nothing's been decided behind closed doors, behind your back, but I'm toward, it's evolved. And I've done my best to update the board on that over the months and to kind of make sure you guys are apprised of what our discussions are and the discussions and the conversations that have taken place with staff and with Mr. Messick and our travels with Sanford. So the point that we're at right now is to actually, is to actually again kind of check in with that option to go over the financial, after that, go over the financial aspects of it and then check back in with you guys and see if this is something to do, something that we can do moving forward. So it's kind of been the evolution of the project. You know, Professor Bonnet is not wrong in terms of what was initially approved. Mayor Perry is certainly not wrong in that there was to be a regional plant and that in itself hasn't changed either at some point in the future as we reach our 2.0 MGD. And that's when the exclusivity ends, the 2.0 MGD. At that point then, we will need to be, we will need to be operationalizing a regional plant or some other treatment facility, whether it be here in Pittsburgh or whether it be somewhere else or whether it be another intergovernmental agreement or something to that effect. But that gives us time in order to be able to do that. Without that, I'm going to give you the curve because I just got some information from... Okay, so you guys can see this might look familiar from this.
I'd like to get another copy of it.
Yeah, this might look familiar from, I mean, we've had iterations of this over the years. You can see, you can see right here, the red shows what our projected, what our projected needs are with Chadon Park. I believe the green is what our projected needs are without Chadon Park. And I have some questions on some of this even before, I don't know that this chart right here is ready for prime time, but it's going to be pretty close to what you're going to see on Thursday. And so you can see right here, 2015, which obviously we're already past right now, but what they're saying is that this right here would be, this right here would be, this is what we have right now, this is our current, this is our current level of production. This right here would be what we would have once the plant goes online, once the plant goes online to the force main, to Sanford. This right here represents, this part of the curve right here represents what would be added with a Chadon Park decentralized wastewater treatment plant if we chose to go in that direction. We also have the ability to add another 25, .25 MGD to that. You can see right here, at this point in 2025, is exactly when we would need to, in order to stay above this red line, so that's key, is staying above this red line, in order to stay above this red line according to projected development and according to information that's provided to us by Chadon Park, we would at that point in time need to have some other option, whether it be a regional facility, whether it be increasing the amount of discharge, engineering something more to Sanford, or any number of other options that we would then have the time to be able to plan and operationalize before that. So you can see a lot of those things, a lot of those notions have changed, a lot of them stayed the same, you know, the eight years or so that the town's been working on this. Eventually, we need to get over here. And so this discussion, what we're doing, what we're doing right here is relatively easy. It's the lowest hanging fruit that we have right now, which is to build a force main and have Sanford treat it with their oversized plant. I think what we do not want to do, and this is what the town talked about for years, is to build an oversized plant right here that would allow, that would have this delta here kind of lying fallow and going to waste and creating an incredible amount of unused public funding. We would then be having conversations probably about lying areas, having them use some of that capacity, just like we're having that same conversation right now with the city of Sanford that, by the way, has an overbuilt facility. So this is kind of the first step towards that process. And again, people far smarter and more intelligent and possessing degrees in engineering will be able to explain this much clearer than I am right now, but this is a lot of what we're going to be going over on Thursday night.
I think you did a great job and I appreciate you refreshing us on that because it has been a year for me. And Mr. Gruisbeck, tell me if you would prefer, but it does feel like these are kind of more policy-focused questions. And so maybe this is the better arena to discuss them rather than at the utilities workshop. But an example of a question that I have is, so in order for us to plan for perhaps in 2025, a much larger plant, it's been called regional, eight or nine years, how long does it take to build a plant? How long does it take to plan, permit, and build a plant if we are a local government? Because I keep hearing the private sector can do it like that.
The private sector's talking about building a half million MGD like that. You know, if we're talking about building something that's going to take up nearly two MGD, it's going to take a little bit longer. But in any case, and the engineers can clarify this for us, but in any case, I don't think it's going to take nine years. I mean, it's going to have to, it's going to have to be less than nine years and I think it can take less than that. Just to give you some scale too, if interbasin transfer isn't, doing an interbasin transfer or completing what's called an interbasin transfer and building, I'll dumb it down beyond what it probably really is, but building a larger force main or a second force main line to Sanford and going over that two MGD, just purely as an example, will take what's called an interbasin transfer and just going through the steps to do that will take a few years. So, and that's purely bureaucratic. Actually permitting, designing and permitting a new plant, yeah, it's going to take some time, but I think according to the information that we have at this point, that's something that we'll be able to do by 2025. We certainly can't do that right now and we're at, we're at needed capacity right now. I mean, we have roughly 50,000 gallons per day right now, a paper flow that we can allocate. We're having to pick and choose with what we can allocate. And it's not just a matter of picking and choosing between a fast food restaurant and some other retail store. It's picking and choosing between affordable housing projects and, you know, and other places of employment that are going to help local residents. So we can either continue that path or, you know, we can, you know, we can, you know, at some point you have to decide on whether or not you want to develop that.
That's not a question, I think. I think there are other questions that need to be addressed as we proceed to the force main to Sanford. Does the board agree?
I agree. I'm glad to, there was something that was said recently that gave me the impression that we were agreeing to something very long-term, let's say, and that to me was contrary to what I was, this is what I recall. So that was good to hear.
Yeah.
A long-term commitment that we're doing.
Yeah, that hasn't changed. What we're, you know, this thing of exclusivity, and I, you know, I agree, and I think, I forget, we all kind of noticed it at the same time when we started looking at the agreement, that the way that you could interpret that language is that, you know, from now and forever more, we would be committed to providing our wastewater to the city of Sanford to treat. And I don't think, as Mr. Messick indicated at the last meeting when we were going over the agreement, and I was sitting at the same table, I don't think that was Sanford's intent. What we're talking about, I think we've cleaned the language up in this latest draft on what you're ready to go over if we can, if that's appropriate, but what we're agreeing to do is specifically up to two MGD. That's this, that's this right here, you see this line right here? That's all we would be agreeing to with Sanford. And you can see how much more that we will have to go and we will have to provide. And that would be in addition to, in addition to this smaller facility and, you know, obviously there's this in terms of regional facility or other, yeah, maybe regional facility is the way to describe it, but that's been kind of the term of art at this point. There's some other, we have to have some other way to treat, you know, to treat this amount right here. And this, this gives us the time to do that.
I'd also like to mention that as far as cost-effectiveness, assuming that we were able to build a plant locally that would treat 2 million gallons a day, let's assume it would only cost 18 million dollars, that would be a way to compare Sanford against a plant in town. The Sanford option for 18 million dollars provides 2 million gallons of treatment. The plant in town provides 1.6 million gallons of treatment because the state limits your plant 80% of its capacity. Before you can go above 80%, you've got to start down the path of another facility of some sort. So...
And your discharge limits on the creek are only 1.25. So how big a plant you got, you can't put more of that in the creek.
Right.
Send it somewhere else.
But if in fact we're comparing dollar for dollar whether to send it to Sanford or do something in town, Sanford option is more cost-effective.
Would someone tell me, we've talked about the allocation, Paul, as you just noted, and we know that we have the allocation into the hall, but my sense is that nobody wants to do that from an environmental standpoint or from, I guess, I'm wondering, is that a totally useless allocation or is it at some point going to be used by someone either in a joint partnership kind of thing with others? I'm not clear on that.
Well, the environmental impact statement concluded that it would not adversely affect the environment. So, I mean, there may be some concerns, but the government and the state has already determined that it would not adversely impact the river and the people depend upon the river. So that's not an issue. The issue is that it's a long way down there. You've got to pump the wastewater all the way down there and if you're going to bring it back for reusable purposes, that's another pipeline to come back up here, it's really extremely expensive. You know, five years ago, it was 30 or 40 million dollars to do that.
To be clear, we're not talking about building a reclaimed water pipe and bringing it back. That's not, I think he's just giving an example.
Wait, what are we talking about, to the hall or to Sanford?
Either one. There's no reused water involved in either one of them. But if you were inclined to do that to maximize the amount of water you're treating, you've got to either put it in the river by way of the creek or directly, or send it to Sanford, or use it for reuse. And you could do both. And we didn't, that would increase that. But it's going to cost a lot more money to go to the river and you're going to have to pipe it, wastewater all the way to the river to the treatment plant.
Well, I've been led to believe that the process for applying for, requesting an increase in interbasin transfer after the 2 million gallons to Sanford is so onerous as we should just consider it in a possibility. That's what I've been told. Well, what is our understanding of that?
Yeah, I don't know if it's onerous or impossible. I didn't tell you that.
But it's political and it's dependent upon DEQ?
We haven't started the process yet.
It's dependent on DEQ and EPA?
We would have to, you know, we could detail exactly what it's going to take and how much time and what the cost would be. As I said before, it's not, it's not an immediate answer.
Sure.
I think you're correct in assuming that it would take some time to actually complete. But to put any scale on that, I don't know as of yet exactly how onerous that would be.
Well, on that basis and until I see some evidence otherwise, I'm just assuming...
I'm not asking you to do that right now. I mean, you're saying that was one of a number of possibilities that we can explore to try to get to that.
Well, with my current understanding, I'm assuming that the Sanford force main option is finite, very finite. And I'd appreciate learning otherwise. But, you know, again, I don't want this town to be limited by legal agreements or business arrangements or decisions that we make today that we weren't fully aware of all the repercussions in the future. So, yeah, the NPDs permit, the sending of 2 million gallons to Sanford, the giving up of reused water production, there's a lot of swirling pieces here, a lot of moving parts, and that's before I begin to think about 2025. And how do we get from here to 2025? How are we ensuring that we're making headway towards Phase 1, 2, and 3?
Well, we only have early Phase 2.
Okay.
You all certainly need to know the repercussions and you need to know the considerations and you need to know the consequences of all the choices. And to some extent, some of those choices have already been outlined for you. And any future choices, you certainly need to know that. But you know what the consequences are if you don't do anything.
Of course.
You're going to stop dead in order.
No one's proposed a moratorium, no one's proposed that we not fund this. So I don't think we need to continue revisiting the frightening prospects of not creating additional capacity.
Well, we're not revisiting it, we're there. We are clearly...
We don't need to be reminded of that, I don't think. I think we're all very much aware of the urgency.
We're just trying to slow down the process, we just want to make sure we have all the information.
Thank you.
If you do Sanford, you've got 2 million gallons in the tank. You're going to need more than that, so you've got time, 10 years or whatever, to decide on how you want to go about doing that. You still have the permit capacity for the creek and the river, you can still do some other kind of plan. I mean, I don't know what kind of questions you need to have answered.
Two and a half, two and a half MGD paid mostly, paid for mostly by someone else is what you're going to be getting until 2025. Then you start getting it between now or whenever it is you guys decide to do whatever it is you want to do and 2025. That's exactly how much time you have to plan and build that Phase 2 to get you up to the top of that graph.
So since then, there's two issues. There's this going on and then there's the whole issue of the reused water that we'd be giving up and also some of the allocations. And we need to have an expanded panel of office together.
I think that's what Commissioner Bonnet is trying to get to, is Commissioner Foley offices so that we can really have a good understanding of exactly the effects of the Sanford force main and the effects of what if we, I know we cannot expand the current wastewater treatment facility. We can't do that, of course, but I think we want to know all of those type of options and I think we should be able to get that, I think, on our meeting.
Let's get to Thursday.
And then I think we also are looking at the, we want to talk about the permits as well, the additional, where we did the additional permit and all of that, and then also about transferring that permit. That's a really important piece to me also, and I'm sure to everyone else. So I think we just want some clarification so that we can make sure that when we're gone, that what we, the decisions that we made doesn't have a negative effect on the town of Pittsburgh where they'll say, oh, why did they do that?
Thank you.
I think that's what we're just trying to get to.
Make sure we're doing the right...
That's what we're going to try to do on Thursday.
Very good.
I just want to make sure that moving forward, I'm just looking ahead to the, you know, far off future, but I want to be very intentional whether we go, you know, down... future, but I want to be very intentional whether we go down the road, if we decide to do a large wastewater treatment plant, or we do these three smaller as has been proposed. And I think we already need to have a sense of what direction we're going in as far as we're going to do one major plant or several smaller. I know we don't need to act on that right away, but I would like to have a sense of where we're going after Sanford.
And I keep hearing that it's an impossibility to expand the small street plant, but I have also heard that we've not explored purchasing adjacent lands. And I actually heard there was an offer made to town before my time. So-
Yeah, what would-
I think it was a take it or leave it on farm or acreage that was necessary or desirable.
The property that was originally contemplated is now owned by Habitat.
But there was the thought that was found that they would give a proportion or we would take a portion?
Habitat's a very cooperative organization.
And as we talked about during the PER process, the topography of the land down there kind of does make that direction prohibitive. The only other direction to travel would be north from the current plant, usually existing neighborhood. And that was actually discussed, I believe, during the last, during this most recent PER process. I don't even know that it got discussed for very long.
I'd love to see the documentation on that analysis. If it's prohibitive technically due to engineering costs, let's see the costs. You know, these are the things I think that it's really important for us to think through very carefully. And I appreciate you hearing me. And, you know, just another one, the notice of termination, how could we possibly plan permit and build a plant in 24 months? I don't think we can. I don't know what it does take. But so that, and I think we've discussed the costs several times, but I have yet to, I looked back at the PER workshop from last year, and there were some costs, but it wasn't in very clear terms for me, as we've been discussing today or recently, the costs per gallon or per 100 gallons, per thousand gallons of treatment.
Just by option rates?
Yes. So if we could compare costs perhaps in that same memo to working on risks, that would be very informative.
Okay.
Or if necessary, if it's too much work, we can break it down.
Well, that's what Davenport is actually breaking down right now, and we talked a little bit about it in the last meeting when we were discussing the agreement. So-
And Davenport is considering what options?
Yeah.
They're not comparing costs, or are they?
The intent is to take a look at what is, you know, what is the agreement that's been proposed as far as the rate by Sanford, and how do we build that into a total cost of providing the service to our residents? And whether or not, and you guys can make the decisions whether or not that cost is palatable.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, that's what we've been talking about doing since really we hired Davenport.
Well, we've always made the presumption that the cost was going to be less, or we wouldn't have pursued the Sanford option. That's my remembrance of it. Maybe at that point, we weren't factoring in the debt service, and that seems to be the big sticking point, is it not, in setting the rates?
I don't think so. You know, the cost of the town is going to be a combination of the treatment costs for Sanford, the capacity charge to Sanford, your existing debt service on your existing debt that you have here, plus the new debt you're going to acquire in terms of the Forest Main. You're going to have some personnel cost for the enterprise people that are still here in Pittsburgh, and whatever function the plant continues to operate, all of that's going to be an expense that's going to have to be recovered through the rate structure that you charge your customers. And whether that cost can be met with the rates, either the current rates or any other future rates, is really the issue that you have, and that I think you need to decide whether it's more economical or not. But it's not really a terribly complicated thing in terms of the items that need to be included. It may be complicated in terms of assessing whether one is more economical than the other, and how much that is. So, you know, the advantage of the Sanford Forest Main is you've got financing that's in hand, and you don't have financing for anything else. So that's a good deal.
You have financing in hand, and you have someone else to pay the majority of the actual debt service on it. That's not even been on the table up until a year and a half ago.
And by that, you're saying a future agreement with Chad Card?
Correct.
Which-
Which has to be ironed out yet. I know that.
Yeah. And I guess that's what sort of makes me a little weak in the stomach, is that none of that's been ironed out yet. I've always wondered, you know, while we're digging this trench to Sanford, is there something that we could do that would make things yet even better? For example, bringing purple pipe back, bringing, making it more economical. It gives them 18 million dollars. I really hate to think that it has a short useful life, and I'd like to extend that by being creative and thinking about what we could do. And if we brought reused water back, we could make better use perhaps of that resource.
Yeah. And as Mr. Massey said, bringing a reused pipe back from Sanford is possible in theory, but it essentially doubles the cost of the project right out of the box. What we're doing right now is simply establishing the Forest Main, and then Chatham Park with their facility is eventually what we would propose to, because what we would actually propose is to be the mechanism to help provide the reused capacity that we would use here locally. Obviously, as Mr. Smith and Mr. Rawls have said numerous times, reuse is a big part of what they're building out there. If you guys have gone out and seen the work that's going on, that pipe actually is purple. I've seen it going in. What it's not going to have for a little while is actual reused water going through it now. You know, it's our hope that we get there at some point in time, or maybe we don't. But our plant, our existing plant, would still continue to have some function, both in terms of equalization, in terms of grit removal, and would also have, would also continue to have a reuse function, at least as far as our hardware goes. We would still have people there helping with reuse functions of our area needs. But, you know, again, as has been said, you know, the Forest Main is to Sanford right now, and all that's involved with it to this point is the lowest hanging fruit out there. The original design concept in the original PER, I think, was up in the neighborhoods at 21 million. The design that we're talking about right now is down to about 17. So it, you know, and that's with repurposing our existing plant. So I think we're definitely heading in the right direction. Rate structure with Sanford is something that we've, you know, we've worked towards. We were talking about $1.25 per thousand for the longest time. We've got that down to a cost of, to an actual cost of treatment. And I think the numbers that we discussed at the last meeting, based on their last three audits, had it anywhere from, off the top of my head, 108 to 118 per thousand, which can be variable over time. And we certainly can provide, they were agreeable to providing some language that could, even if you wanted to lock in a higher figure for a given period of time, they're certainly open to those possibilities as well. So I think this discussion is good. I think you guys have provided some great input to this point, you know, from a staff perspective, from a consultant perspective. We're working to help answer some of those questions. I think a couple of the next meetings that we have coming up, both with consultants, for the town consultants with Chatham Park, I hope will get us quite a ways, not only in the technical concerns, but in the policy concerns as well. And then there again, once you guys, I think, have a pretty good basis of knowledge as far as what we're looking at to this point on the technical and policy aspects of it, then we get into the financial discussion of it. And yes, you know, Chatham Park is aware that we have that, that all of this is contingent on an agreement with them for guaranteeing the debt load on it. They know that, they've committed to it, but until we actually work it out, we haven't worked it out yet. So, and that's one more item on the checklist. But I'll do whatever you guys want to do. I just know from a staff perspective, we can't keep doing what we've been doing. I mean, for the last years, we can't, we're not in this community, we're not in a position to do that.
Mayor, you reminded me when you mentioned the purple pipe, that the interbasin transfer is a net equation. So the county is buying water from Sanford, and whatever comes across the ridge is a deduction against what we send back across the ridge. So when it flows both ways, we get to account for that. So in fact, I don't know how much they're getting from the Sanford now, how much the county is, but that would be deducted from how much we're sending their way.
That's good news.
Well, it is. It is. And I can only imagine that the county would, in its continued growth, probably purchase more. And what with the Jordan Lake partnership, there are interconnections everywhere that are going to be coming along. So that may enable more than 2 million to cross that border. Well, the point about the purple pipe, laying the purple pipe in parallel, it makes me wonder, can a pipe be redesignated as reuse? Could we have a double-barreled pipe to insulate ourselves from risk of failure of any one pipe to Sanford to send our wastewater down there? And then in future, take one of those back and convert it to reuse? I don't know. It's just, you know, the kinds of things I'm pondering as I think about the risks that I have been trained to assess. But I look forward to receiving your risk memo. I look forward to receiving greater insights on rates. I would like to see some comparisons, perhaps this to the options that were arrayed in the memo from Wooton, last year's utility workshop.
Yeah, I'm sure you can play the things that we can draw and to come up with that.
Help me contextualize the costs. And at some point, I think we need to, you know, maybe Environmental Link would offer us a price so that we can, again, compare these costs as we're embarking on a very large project to Sanford and understand all the implications. Thank you.
We then are in a position of receiving either further discussion or a motion to approve the capital budget for the Forest Main project.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital budget.
And second it?
Motion made by Michael Skierka, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor please indicate by standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Under new business now, we would proceed to the site plan review for Pittsburgh roots and thank those people who have been waiting on this particular agenda item so much that we needed to talk about.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that I be able to recuse myself on this topic. My firm, Silver Consultants, is involved with land planning and civil engineering design for the project. So if I may be excused.
Is that required, motion?
Yes.
Second. Moved by Thad Wilson Foley, seconded by Cameron Ball. Those in favor please indicate by standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we have SP 2016-05 for Pittsburgh roots. Proposed tonight is a plan for three one-story commercial buildings that will be located at the corner of Subtles, Russell Brown, and Freedom Parkway. Those three buildings would total 14,520 square feet in size, and as you can see on the screen here, and there's parking towards the rear inside those buildings and landscaping around the buildings and along the three streets that front, that this development fronts on. We have, staff has reviewed these plans, and they have, they're reviewed in accordance to ordinances by the departments, and we are recommending approval. Plan Board last week heard this request and is also recommending approval. There was cut some discussion amongst Plan Board members about the architecture, which you'll see a little bit later. A member or so thought that some of the architecture didn't seem, did not, to her, didn't seem to screen Pittsburgh. But after discussion with her fellow board members, there was an understanding that this plan is being developed, reviewed, and developed under current town ordinances, which we don't really have any architectural standards. So those questions about architecture were something that we wouldn't be looking for. And additionally, with stormwater, this plant's meeting the stormwater ordinance of the town, and some on the board thought that maybe they should be doing something different than what we would have other projects in town do, that they would provide for. Ultimately, the board did vote, again, unanimously to recommend approval. And I do believe the applicants are here.
I have one question before we go today. What was the concern represented in stormwater?
As my memo points out, is that the thought that stormwater was just not innovative enough. I don't know specifically what the issue was, but that, in their opinion, that the stormwater was just not innovative enough.
They mentioned forest pavement.
As Fred would say?
Again?
They mentioned forest pavement or concrete that allowed stormwater to go through it, or asphalt, depending on the mixes for either of those. And they just mentioned gas and other innovative type of stormwater.
But that's not in our, in our-
It's allowed.
But that's not required.
It's not required.
Okay. So what were their other concerns? That was mostly asked.
The stormwater. Just that, Fred, remind me, but it was just using other innovative tools in the toolbox to control stormwater.
So Fred, what's your opinion of the stormwater way to design?
They met our ordinance, they issued permits, all of, there's three rain gardens. So arguably, it's this type of low-impact development using rain gardens close to the source instead of a large pond elsewhere. So I prefer more, more smaller facilities and fewer larger facilities. So this, in my mind, was a decent balance of how we, the largest one is at the bottom on the south side of the project, the southeast side there.
What is that question about the ponds? This has come up before, but who maintains those ponds? Because they do require some maintenance. Is that something that the owner of the building is responsible for?
It'll be the owner, the HOA, or, yeah, it's in the maintenance covenant that's recorded at the county, who's responsible for the maintenance.
Yeah, because they do require-
Yeah, a lot of babysitting. They also have a pipe under the parking lot that's meant to hold the volume of the storms. Think of these as the flooding storms. Buyer retention doesn't manage or hold back flooding type storms, the one-year, the two-year, the five-year storm events. So the volume, they've met our ordinance with the volume by putting it in a pipe under the parking lot, and it slowly meters out into the rain garden from there.
So Fred, you mentioned, I think you educated me that these are called performance standards, and I think of it in terms of annual rainfall events. And my goodness, we've just been through a really, really exceptional one with Hurricane Matthew. And my goodness, we've just been through a really, really exceptional one with Hurricane Matthew. Could I ask you just to share with us your thoughts about how we might be moving in future with our UDO as regards the increased severity of rainfall events?
Certainly, the, the rainfall events statistically are becoming more intense and less lengthy. Shorter duration, but more intense. So, twenty-five years ago, an average storm would be modeled as three inches over twenty-four hours. That's considered kind of a pretty moderate event. Now, we're getting three inches in forty-five minutes instead of twenty-four hours. So, that is a large volume increase in a short amount of time. So, one consideration we need to look at requiring volume capture of that intense rainfall now in such a short amount of time because it, it creates all kind of destruction downstream if it's falling on a developed site and immediately running off. There's nothing you can do about it, you know, in most cases because nobody designs for that type of storm in North Carolina. Florida and other places where they're used to this kind of thing, they, they'll build a, they'll, they'll design a storm art feature for the hundred-year statistical storm for that area. Everywhere you live, the hundred-year storm is different. But what you're talking about is a whole new look see at meteorological, meteorological conditions that are not published as far as I can tell. It's just data you can, you can get from the local weather service. Engineering uses the technical paper forty, it's a nineteen forty-six document. That's what engineers use today for volume capture. Rain, and in those days, it met the average rainfall. But we would have to investigate with local meteorologists, you know, state climate office on that kind of business to figure out what kind of storms the team might have been getting the last, say, five, ten years. I'm, I'm not sure statistically what those storms were actually, looked like.
Well, just if I could take a brief tangent, I was with my father, my eighty-six-year-old father during the hurricane down in Hampstead, North Carolina, near Wilmington. And when it became clear that Matthew had been very kind to Pender County, well, eastern Pender County, the coast, and much harder on the I-95 corridor, for example, I got to work rapidly planning my, my trip home with concern for Chatham County and returning to my family, my children, my wife. And I learned that there was actually a very significant damage on I-40. There was a, I, I think there was actually a patch that was blown out, ripped out, as Sal was described, and a very large detour, six-mile detour to get around it. So, you know, I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that this is, in the grand scheme of things, a fairly small development. I appreciate the efforts to incorporate what are currently best management practices or appear to be, according to Fred, in, in stormwater management, retention, treatment. But this is something that I'm concerned about, that we look into in future. We've already asked one pocket neighborhood to model their runoff to a hundred-year standard. And I think that's something that we probably want to be thinking about with our UDO. Do I hear any, any other thoughts?
Well, it just sounds like the protocol needs to be updated from nineteen forty-six. Some hour and another, that just absolutely shocks me and...
It takes a long time for the federal government to, to document all the things.
No, I think it's a great fault that things would always be the way they were.
Sometimes it's about getting agreement. Well, I'm not sure what kind of action we need to take on that. But if there are others who have similar concerns, I'd love for folks to speak up.
Well, stormwater is always a concern, especially after this instance, this past weekend. So, basically, when we do the UDO, certainly, we would love to hear what we can anticipate or what we need to actually focus on because that is, I mean, very, very important. As we know, that places in Pittsburgh, certainly, we're on the verge of flooding over on fifteen five oh one, same places all the time, and probably over on Park Drive. I didn't go over there.
I was about to address that one earlier.
They were. So, basically, it's always something we need to definitely be keeping in mind.
Further questions?
I guess I just have one question, maybe for the developer. I know we haven't got our UDO, I mean, our additional elements approved and still working on this. I assume that Chatham Park is going to use these additional elements they have, so, say, for the lighting and all like that, are you guys still planning on using this direction, UDO? I mean, the additional elements, is that what you guys are still planning on in that stage?
Yes.
So, this will be the first example of applying your additional elements?
Yes.
Further thoughts or questions?
Do you have any more powerful?
I have lots of powerful, if you'd like to hear it.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Andrew Itrius. I am our architect at Volly, working with the team for this development. Mr. Strom is in the primary developer of the project. Taylor Hogs with Hogs Architect of Pittsburgh is also partnering, I am actually partnering with him on this project. As you know, Mr. Sioke and his, his office is working on the civil engineering for this project. And we have Rob Everson, who is not here, but out of Burnham, who's the landscape architect. I will repeat a few things, just to orient everyone again. It's a two-point-seven-five acre site. As you know, it's on the corner of Russet Run and Sals and bordered by Freedom Parkway. The first building, Building A, which is this one here, closest to the corner, is a sixty-one hundred and eleven square foot building. It is a, all these buildings are essentially a retail, restaurant, potential office. One thing with retail, with these buildings, is that there's a need for flexibility. There's a need for flexibility in the plan because tenants change. So, in terms of some things I'll get to in a minute, and just see why things were oriented the way they are. The second building is thirty-five hundred and fifteen square feet. And the third building is forty-eight hundred and ninety-four square feet. Site is oriented and basically meets the eighty-seven parking spaces that are required by this development. And while this, the development is allowed to have a hundred percent impervious surface, we are only at fifty-four percent. I don't know how that is the case, but we are within our means by far, if I have. Maximum allowable building height is fifty feet, our maximum is thirty-one on buildings. And they vary in height, and you'll see that in a minute. And there is a, one of the things that was done, and that was important in terms of how the site plan goes, is that we built, we brought all the buildings up to the street front. We wanted to create more of a wood, more of a walkable, more urban edge along the main streets, along Russet Run and Sals. And by doing that, also creating some open plaza space that becomes a public plaza entry off of the corner here at Russet Run and Sals. So, there is a public access point that brings you up into this plaza space in here. Parking is set behind the buildings as much as is possible and in order to allow the building frontage to face the street and that the parking be less impactful to the street front. One of the other things that was used in order to create some of these bio-retention areas, as was said, these rain gardens, if you would, these areas here, up in here, and down here. These areas are, are also taking all of the root drainage directly piped into those bio-retention ponds. So, we're not taking root water from hoping to go where it needs to go. We're piping directly from there so that is a good containment condition. The other thing with that too is that we don't use those areas as just pure landscape areas. We use those as bonding courtyard and movement spaces as well as with the application of some of these plaza spaces. Other things that have been done, indoor landscape design, some paving patterns. Intent, as you can slightly see it in here, there's some papers that are going in here. There's some vertical changes in pavement color and pavement texture so that as you move from the parking areas into what become entrances to these buildings, some of that is directed with some paving and landscaping as well. There are outdoor patio spaces, potential over here on this building. And then, as you can tell, the, these buildings are all basically four-sided buildings, which is also a, a unique quality for retail buildings and a challenging quality for retail buildings as well. As retail buildings obviously require storage, restaurants require kitchen space, service areas. So, we are looking at treating these buildings as open on all four sides of the wood. So, if they appear, there's no side that is out the back end of the, the project. As you can tell, the street frontage is really frontage and also have the backside. This is also a frontage. The other thing that the developers are doing, they have commissioned, including this now, Edwin White from Southern City, Southern City, who's a sculptor, to develop some art and sculptural work that will be put and located throughout the project as one of a amenity feature and sort of focal features in the, in the overall project landscape. The buildings themselves...
Can I interrupt for just a moment? Alice, do you need, for the purposes of your minutes, do you need him to speak into the microphone a little bit more? Or, no? Okay, it's picking up, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's enough, it might, I always get that.
And if you could speak a little louder, thank you.
Is that better?
I suppose I'm thrilled that you're using some of this work from the local artists in your, in your, in your town's renovation.
So, the buildings, this is the corner here of Subtles and Russet. The buildings, primary materials, we're using three primary materials, which are a polished CMU, a brick. The polished CMU is the black color that you see here. A brick, which you'll see, this is the lighting material, you'll see in some other images. And Ariscraft Stone, which is the lightest, lightest color, if you would. That is and will be on all three buildings. The intent behind the design of the project is that these buildings, if you would, talk to each other and they're related to each other both materially as well as the way they're situated on the site. So, it was important that we use those materials and keep them consistent throughout. We're using two accent materials, which is a vertically fluted aluminum panel and a solid colored aluminum panel, which you'll see in the red components of the project. We're using the change of materials and the accent materials to help create visual accents and visual focus points to create signage areas and locate those within the, in the, within the project and to help, if you would, produce movement and activity along the, along the streets and along in between, between buildings. The buildings heights vary. One of the things that was important to this project was that we don't create what you typically have in a typical retail center. Single parapet heights are just little pop-outs. We really wanted to create environments that created a lot of movement, created opportunities at the corners on both ends of the site to be oriented both from a vehicular point of view as well as a pedestrian point of view. This height, which is the highest component of the buildings, the thirty-one foot height, these heights in here are in a twenty-four foot, twenty-five foot height. One of the things that we did and was looked at with importance is that these buildings have a sense of a two-story feel and not just a single-story feel so that we create some mass and interest and prominence at these corners. While the building is prominent in the corner, you can see we've created this plaza space that would allow the corners to open up and bring walkways and public into those spaces and improve it. This view and this view are from the parking area inside. One of the things that retail buildings innately end up with is, is our flat façade. We've tried very hard in this project. And the reason for that is that internal spaces and tenants like to have very simple interior plans that they can lay out however they want. So, once you start moving interior walls around, sometimes makes it a little more complicated for them to do. It was a goal of this project to work both directions, try to create interior spaces that were easier, easy to use and divisible for the future tenants, but also create a depth, if you would, to the buildings by offsetting materials, by protruding out some visual spaces and some larger glazing spaces, canopies that protrude out. We use the canopies on these, on those projects and overhangs in building protrusions, as you saw in that first slide, to help kind of capture outdoor space, to bring the buildings down to pedestrian scale as you're moving and walking through them and to create some diversity in movement and connection between all those buildings. Essentially, what we feel excited about is that, well, I think we've created an environment here that takes three buildings that are, you know, a project that we've mentioned is not the biggest project going on, but it's a project that I think is a catalyst for things. And I think it's a project that brings retail development in kind of a, brings it up into a different level than I think is seen very often. And I think it's a project that certainly we're proud of and we look that, not only does it bring this particular site some prominence, but I think it helps work with what we feel is a unique quality of Pittsburgh and brings the lower one and brings more uniqueness and brings more diversity to it. There are two tenants that are essentially signed up, and that is Root Cellar and Bottle Revolution. They're both local companies, and we're local, the North Carolina companies. And they are excited to be here and I know the developer is excited that they're on board and looks for them to be kind of catalyst for what's to come and what other tenants hopefully pick up.
Can you tell them what Root Cellar is?
Root Cellar is a restaurant. They currently have a spot in Chapel Hill. And if you take a look at this first piece here, there's all these components here or basically roll-up glass. So, the intention, that is the Root Cellar space, they're taking three days at that first building. And those spaces are intended so that the inside and outside can come on. There's a whole notion between both, both of these buildings that that plaza space moves into the interior. the interior spaces vice versa.
You can roll them up like a garage door?
Yeah.
Never seen how that's heard of. And what would you think of when they--
The second one is Bottle Revolution. They would be located in the second building.
Is that kind of--
That would be in this space here. I don't know why it's there. In this space here. And they're basically a, what would you call them?
It's a beer and wine concept.
So they work really nicely with Root Cellar in terms of complementing each other without a little lack of each other.
Is that retail or is that a place for--
It's both.
Oh, okay.
It's retail as well as to enjoy on premises. I might add that the two women who own Root Cellar live in Chapelville, and they were committed to having their second location be in Pittsburgh.
Yes, you're there. Tell me about the parking. I have an ample parking space here for... Show me all about the different parking. I'm looking at, looking at the plans there to see where you're parking.
There's parking here, which comes off Russet Run.
Okay.
And then all of this back here is parking with landscaped islands in between. This area here is a bio-retention as well as a landscaped closet component. So basically, you would park on this side. You'd come in either off of Suddles, off Freedom Parkway. You would park in here and move this way. There are entrances to the shops and the restaurants on this side and this side, as well as both sides on both of these buildings. So essentially, you're coming in the backside of the, well, just behind the street frontage side of the building to move yourself into these closet spaces. And based on square footage, it uses within the parking required.
There must be a great deal of grading to be done here because as I drive in there right now, it's almost mountainous, is it not? So in order to get it down to street level, or am I just perceiving, is it at street level?
It is at street level. This is actually a few steps down from street level. The street level up in this corner is slightly higher in the following. And then drop down, street level here. There is some grading, but it's essentially a flat component. The deep portion of the site is really back in that area where the bio-retention, the larger bio-retention area is. And there is and there will be a fair amount, I will say you're right, there is a fair amount of grading. There's a retaining wall that's running along this edge.
And the retaining wall is to protect the 100-foot buffer, is that correct? Is that a, is that a natural buffer or is that a planted buffer?
This buffer, I believe, is going to be planted and natural? Both. Yeah.
Is there any impervious or partly pervious portion that comes up anywhere near the, that 100-foot buffer? In other words, it just, it seems like there's just nothing but paving coming up to the 100-foot buffer, and then there's the retaining wall. It just, it just feels like it's really well, it just feels like it's just coming right up on that buffer. And when I think about a buffer, I think of, you know, an ease to it instead of just concrete and a wall and then a buffer.
Well, the area here, which is planted, and then this area in here, which is a large planting zone, is outside of that retaining area. So we have a planted area and a planted buffer, if you would, pre-adjusted in front of it just on the other side of the retaining wall, and then it slopes down and goes into a natural buffer area. So there's kind of a layered scenario with the buffer.
But it mostly seems designed to separate from that water feature. Is that correct?
It's not a, if I'm not mistaken, it's not a water feature.
Stormwater best management practice.
Bio-retention.
Bio-retention.
Yeah, there is no water feature. The stormwater is essentially a landscaped area, a mullered area. On occasions, when it does rain, it will fill up. That will only last for a little while and dissipate and go through the soil.
So the water won't linger?
No, it won't. It won't. And what it will do is go into the pipe system that Fred mentioned and store it and then let it out slowly so it does meet the pre-development conditions for one-, two-, five-, 10-year storms. So it manages a lot of water, holds it on site before it releases it. And the bio-retention cells basically do the filtration that pull the nutrients out.
I thought there was a feature. I thought there was a feature down here.
There is a stream down there.
That's--
And so that's the 100-foot buffer. There's also a sewer main running through the buffer. So basically, on the south side of the sewer is the natural component of the buffer, and north of it would be planted because there's not a whole lot of foliage there north of the easement.
Are there further questions?
I could have one. Looking at this diagram, I assume that's nine, 10 possible retail units there.
Correct.
And so have the town halls that don't be built?
We are hoping to start full construction in early spring.
Right, so you're building one building at a time?
They're going to essentially roll one after the other.
I have one more question about Ruffit Run. So that street will be, why do you think that, correct?
It's presently under construction, so it'll be four lanes divided with a median.
Okay. And it's roundabout?
Yeah.
Little cobbler dam?
Right here. Yeah.
I didn't see it first.
Are there further questions?
So, let's see, if there's a restaurant here, Mr. Smith, in reading the additional elements, I've not seen much discussion of, for example, food waste recovery. Is that something that you could include, additional space in the recycling and refuse removal area for food waste recovery from a restaurant?
Yes, we could look into that. Ron here is the actual developer of this site. It just happens to be in Chatham Park.
Mr. Ron?
Yes.
Mr. Strong could address that.
Ron Strong, yes.
Mr. Strong?
I can mention there are two enclosed dumpster areas. One is a single dumpster, the other one is a double. And at the double, there's lots of room for recycling opportunities. We made it extra big.
Great.
Bends in there.
Well, there happen to be two companies in Chatham County that do food waste recycling and composting. Brooks Contractor in Goldston and, I can't believe I'm forgetting the name of the other--
McGill.
McGill, thank you. And I don't know that both of them do removal from restaurants, but I know that one of them does, and I'm sure that they'd be happy to consult on design considerations.
Do they use compost or they--
They take leftover food that's unusable and compost it. Another thing that I've been reading in the additional elements, the, well, first I'll just say, I'm pleased to see the landscape design, and I think, I would call that exceptional. I think there's really diameters of the trees, which, caliper, caliper, and a number of trees. It's really nice to see that. One of the things that, question that was raised in my mind in the additional elements was regarding high-quality soil for tree plantings. Obviously, when we go to plant trees, we want to have them last and survive. We want our investment to take. We want as little loss of those trees as possible and hopefully have them be long-lived. And high-quality soil was addressed in the additional elements but not defined. And if that's something that we could do, I don't know that we need to have the definition for your project, but I'll encourage you to think about that. There again, we have two businesses in Chatham County that produce high-quality soil.
Well, one thing I'd like to mention about the Landscape Architects Act, which was mentioned was Rob Emerson. Rob was the landscape architect for the Pocket Park.
Great.
So he has thought about that, and I think you would find the detail in the drawings that talks about how you prepare the soil--
Great.
--for the trees that are, especially the ones that are in the paved areas.
Yes.
Because they need special treatment.
Sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all my questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Moved by Bat Wilson Foley, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, thank you. Thank you very much. Can we, do we need a motion to bring Michael back in? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by John Bonnix. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Issues? You're lucky. That brings us to additional updates and reports, among them being first, the manager's update on the project. So, Brad, good to see you.
Thank you. I have a mayor just got a few words. The housing committee that the county is putting together to initially look at affordable housing, I think they're going to be having an initial focus on rental. Housing in particular has scheduled meeting for November 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Dunlap classroom, which is, I think, in the planning offices for Chatham County. And you'll recall that you elected to appoint Mayor Protown Baldwin and Commissioner Wilson Foley as an alternate to that committee. I think the email just went out today, so be looking for that if you have any questions. I plan on attending, so if you have any questions, somehow they keep, they keep drawing me into it, so I'm going to be there, but you guys are going to be listening to the stars. Anything I can do for you to support that, I'll be helped. Auditor, something I did mention, my written, one of the reports, our auditors were here last week, and they were here about two and a half days. They are looking to do an audit presentation for the second meeting in November. So we'll be looking forward to scheduling that, hearing about the state of our finances so far, and I think everything, especially for Heather's first audit, she had everything, I think, in pretty good order. And with the auditors being here only two and a half days, I think was a pretty good sign for us, so. Now, realize that this place might go, I think I left it out there.
It has not gone in--
The Hurricane Matthew, of course, came and went. We had obviously quite a few branches and trees. Power was out in a few areas, I think, I think we're just talking to Mayor Perry, I think we're still trying to ascertain from Duke Energy exactly the extent of the total remaining power outages here in town. It affected us, or it had the potential to affect us here locally for a little while. Luckily, we were on notice and I think had personnel in place, and we were able to act accordingly. Had a couple of, you know, the power, of course, affects us operationally in terms of our wastewater treatment and our water treatment. Staff was on the job and I think carried us through seamlessly through all of it. So I think a lot of proper due respect is, I should be giving to town staff during this. Flooding, I think, the police department, too, for keeping an eye on flooding and coating the flooded areas and then taking the cones away when it was necessary. And so thanks for the police department as well and the work that they put into it. As far as some of the other things, I'll just briefly mention that the street fair, of course, we're still planning on, and looking forward to that going into October 29th. Just, I think, an update, just something to mention about that is, according to Mr. Horn, Paul Horn, the number of booths have been streamlined a little bit this year compared to last year. The numbers, the total numbers will be down, but that's somewhat intentional in order to maintain a local flavor for the event. Have more local people as opposed to triangle vendors. And then also, too, to make sure, we had a lot of, I think, the last couple of years in particular, as we really grew the event and became more popular with vendors, we found that there were a lot of duplicate products that were being put out there. I think we wanted, I think we paid a little bit closer attention, making sure that there was a little bit of variety in terms of what was offered there. So numbers are down a little bit, but that's going to be, at least as far as this year goes, that's somewhat intentional. And I mentioned, you can keep up to date on Facebook, there's a Facebook page for it as well. The kiosks, as Mayor Perry indicated, staff will install the kiosks. We do need a verification from PVA, the downtown business owners. They have been ordered, so once they arrive and once the locations have been verified, then in the meantime, we'll, you know, we'll look at what's been, what's involved at a specific locations. And they arrive, then we can get those installed and we can continue on with our quest to keep our downtown as uncluttered as far as necessary signage is concerned. We talked a lot about the utility workshop. You know, again, what I'd really like to stress is that this Thursday is an opportunity to get into the technical aspects of it. I don't mean to tear this one open again, but to learn about what we've talked to at this point, to give you guys enough information to be able to eventually, you know, make a decision on how we're going to move forward or not with some of these challenges that we have up ahead. Following the workshop on the 24th, we have scheduled a meeting on, October 24th, we have scheduled a meeting with Davenport at our regular meeting, and we should have a pretty good idea, I think, on the financial aspects of the project and what we're dealing with. Again, like we've talked about, trying to make sure that the project from a complete endgame standpoint is affordable both for the town and for the citizens. And it's fair to us, it's fair to Sanford, it's fair to you, to anybody that would be looking up to the utility. And that's, that's what we've been charged with, really all of us. I mentioned the new town phone system. As far as anybody can remember, this will be the first time that the town hall phone system is going to get replaced. The, it was supposed to happen this week, it looks like, in order to, we're going to have to push that back yet another week because our phone companies from various buildings, we need to fork over some of those numbers, and that's taking more time than we bought for some reason, so it'll be another week as far as we have our, until we have a higher-tech phone system.
Excuse me. Brian? Will that allow phone calls to this building to be directed to other offices at the locations?
Yeah, that's not really appropriate. Yeah, that's not really prohibited now, but yeah.
Are you thinking remotely?
Right now, the voicemail system, the recording, has different phone numbers listed. One must hang up and then redial to connect with other offices. Okay. So. Yeah, we can talk more about it, so I understand what the needs are. But yeah, I think it's going to be a lot more functional and robust than what we have now.
Great.
The Pittsburgh Elementary School sidewalk, we are, have a bid opening on October 18th for both segments, for the NC 87 and the elementary school sidewalk component. There's two segments. The grant approval requires that the bids be approved by DOT, so once we receive the bids, we'll submit them to DOT. We could technically begin the 87 portion ahead of the elementary school road portion, but I think our intention at this point is to see how the project is bid out in total and whether or not there's some advantage in doing it all at once or doing it in parts. And so we'll be checking in with you on what we would recommend to do with that as well. And then lastly, the only other thing I guess I would mention is that sanitary sewer infiltration infiltration 9I project, we have a pre-con meeting that's scheduled yet this week with DWI. And we're looking to begin work on some of the fixing of the sanitary sewer lines and some of the connections and the manhole structures and some of the other ways that, you know, that stormwater and rainwater have been infiltrating our system and going to our existing plant. So I think as far as capacity, that's, that's going to be an improvement, a necessary needed improvement there. And look to begin that work, believe it will go as well, according to what we, what we meant to October 17th. And town staff will be doing some of the work and in terms of the connections, recall when we did the smoke testing, was that about, when was that, last spring?
Yeah.
Sometime when we did some smoke testing, we found some smoke coming up in the lateral leading to individual services. And so, you know, we, I think we began working with those folks back then and letting them know what was going on. Staff will reconnect with those folks before any work begins. And then, and hopefully we'll begin solving the problem. It's kind of cool because the sewer lines themselves are relatively, relatively simple to fix and that you're essentially putting in, it's almost like I would, I would equate to, you know, if you've seen those, if you've had a flat tire, you've had a leak in your tire and you, you know, use some of the temporary fix solution with your tire, that's kind of in a way what's going on with, with some of these sanitary sewer lines, except in a more permanent way. But the slip line is essentially a type of foam or epoxy that's shot through the line and it kind of seeps into those cracks and areas as opposed to digging the sewer lines up and, you know, creating all sorts of havoc. This is a relatively innocuous process. Once we get in the habit of finding some of these old segments, it's, as soon as we get the process down and we're familiar with the technology, it's going to be pretty easy moving forward, I think, to fix a lot of these older segments in town. Some of the structures themselves, manhole structures themselves, yeah, it's going to require a little bit more digging. I don't think it's going to be quite as bad as what we saw over on that stormwater, Salisbury Street Stormwater Project that we had, I think the mayor's first capital project that we had. But there'll be, there'll be some physical digging that'll have to take place with this, just not quite as much media coverage as though. I'm going to start, stop talking tonight until you guys ask me some questions, or we don't.
Well, I got an update from Indira Everett with Duke Power. I had asked her to check and see what kind of outage we had in the county. And she indicated at 7 o'clock tonight that it was about, well, it was 400 at, at 4:00 PM. But then she says, she sent another email at 8 that said, "Looks like it's creeped up to about 1,000." They'll continue to fluctuate because sometimes you have to turn things off or switch things out. I'll provide new updates in the morning when I can actually confirm it to supervisors, but.
How many people know about?
Yes, that is. Be interesting, we don't have many wearing pants below, but I don't know that they can break that down. I was concerned about some folks up Fire Tower Road that had some elderly and new babies and stuff like that. So I drove up there this afternoon, but they had a big tree that right at the top of, of the hill that took their power out. But they were, they were in by, back on by 4:00 this afternoon, so.
And the children had a powerful bit.
Was it?
I'm surprised that a facility like that would not have a backup system, but they were in the dark. Everybody looked ahead.
I thought there was a generator there.
I have to talk to the mother about that, but I'll.
The house specifically hasn't been very hard to generate.
So, while you were out, Chief Crutchfield, the kudos were given to the department for the various cones and assistance of people in the flooding this past weekend. Thank you for that. We also have in our package, of course, your protocol for inclement weather operations. And that was, that was very nice to have.
Thank you. A lot of that goes out to John's staff. I know Junior was out several hours Saturday. They did a lot of it too. But thank you.
Saw a lot of utility trucks going back and forth with pickup trucks going with, with.
Yeah, I had to, I had to put the cones up a couple of times. They got ran, ran over by a few people who decided to turn out there.
Did we have any roads that were closed? Did we have some roads that were closed?
Yeah, we closed off the usual there at Oakwood Drive, right there at Park Drive, just past Garrett's Cruze House. That was one of the usuals. We actually had some areas that didn't close that as we had in the past. They had a little bit in the bottom of Chatham Street, but it wasn't, wasn't per se impassable. We just kind of would put cones out to say you may want to turn around with those. And had a little bit out on Park Drive, but I've actually seen some of those places actually worse. So I wonder, I hate to give them credit, but I wonder if some of Fred's plans aren't working.
Yeah.
But some, but it, since I was a child, it flooded there, your Garrett's Cruze, and so that's one of the ones we know to watch automatically. But like the Sanford Road, I've seen it in the past get worse down there near Sheriff Quitz's House. And it wasn't that bad when I went and checked a couple of times this weekend.
What about the bridge there at the laundromat? Was, usually that's pretty high. The bridge there at the laundromat?
Yeah, it got a, it flooded up to the old, the house that's back in that corner. I actually took some photos of it, come over the old town dam. And I took a little video of it. I've never seen it that high myself. It actually came around the dam building. Instead of just coming over the spillway and the, and painting on the side, it actually came around the building and up into the park. I've never seen that myself. I took some photos of that on my phone, just FYI. But it kind of shows those are the areas you'd rather the water go. Luckily, I don't think it crept up to, I don't know who it is that lives at the end of, that end of Lotful Street. It used to be the old Cronback House. But it got up to their back door, but I don't know if it got to the house. The last time I checked, it wasn't there. And I went and checked, like, Tots' old place on Old Goldstone Road, it never got to their house when I checked it. Places I know that used to flood, not a lot here. But fortunately, some of the things, I think that probably, the measures that the, were taken at the Town Lake Park in the last few years probably helped that over there at Tots'. Of course, I'm not an engineering thing, but I remember that flooded since I was a little child. So it looked like that, at least prevented that maybe.
Chief Crutchfield, would you be willing to share those photos and videos with us?
No, I can, they're on my phone. So I'll be happy to download them, email them, P. Y. L. Y.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And I very much appreciated the alerts that Duke Energy sent out by telephone and sent an email to Indira regarding that. I did request that if there was any opportunity to send them either earlier or later than, I got mine at 10:37 at night. I was already asleep. And it put me in real panic because I don't ever receive calls that late. Did anyone else receive it after, say, 9:30? Do anyone recall 9, this was Thursday night?
Late afternoon.
Really?
I'm thinking, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, Thursday. A long time ago.
I got, I got two of your calls today. One was, I'm staying longer than late.
I received several complaints. And it was between 9:30 and 10:30. Actually, one person closer to 11:00.
Yeah, definitely.
Really interesting. Yeah. That's good.
Well, I think we're, Commissioner Concerns, Jay?
I have just a few questions, but I'll hold up on those till Thursday. Do have one maybe for staff. Little concerned, the use that we're using for Summit Engineering Firm, do we have a contract with them now?
Yeah, that was, we approved a budget amendment for that at the previous meeting, for the additional $30, $30.
Was that an additional amount or was there another earlier amount?
It was additional.
There was an initial 15 and then we added another 15, but.
Is there any reason why we're not using hydrostructures?
I'm curious about that too, because they know our water better than anybody. I'm just curious why we're talking.
I guess it depends on the service they're providing. We're using hydrostructures for services. We're just not using them for CEI for Chatham Park.
Construction inspection.
Why do that?
We put out RFQ and Summit won it. That was over a year ago. We've hired, we're hiring hydrostructures continuously for other projects, modeling, plan review for complicated projects. We're doing our INI project for us.
They provided extensive comments on the North Side Water System improvements. We're spending plenty of money, I just wrote.
I'm just concerned there are local business just right down the road from us. Maybe work on our utilities far more longer than some of us have been in these seats and, you know, employed for the town. I just don't want us to overlook their information and their data that they have on file.
We agree.
So where is Summit Engineering?
Hillsboro. We, we actually utilize hydrostructures data. It's actually our data. We bought it. We pay for it. We go to them all the time for, whenever we can't come up with them, ASBIL, GIS data, et cetera. So I'm usually go there at least once a week looking for information or talking to those folks.
I think.
It does bring up an interesting topic that I was saying, Jay, that when we're getting bids on projects, do we, do we give local help in financial? And I mean, that's something, that's an interesting point to discuss. I think that's important.
We don't, we don't have, in previous lives, I have worked with policies that will, that will allow you to provide some relief or some leeway as far as you get a local bid. A local firm gives a higher bid than maybe a firm that's not as local. And sometimes you give a little bit of local preference. In North Carolina, it's a little bit more flexible in terms of how you go along bidding and signing these types of contracts. In no way, shape, or form, we made an effort to exclude hydrostructures from any of those projects or any of those processes. I think the thing, the, I think the confusion, and I'll be frank here, I think the confusion kind of came from when we were working with hydrostructures on the Bellamont Point project and the Bellamont Point. And we had some, we had some fire pressure flow issues. You may be familiar with Commissioner Farrell. And in working through those with the developer and expressing those concerns that we had with fire flow, the developer began working directly with, began asking hydrostructures to essentially design some of their treatments directly. And hydrostructures was in turn billing costs for that. And so what we did was try to maybe tighten up that billing process a little bit so that the consultant was getting billed more directly for these costs that were their responsibility as opposed to the town's responsibility. I think as the home game got played, that got interpreted as we're somehow getting rid of hydrostructures. And that's, as you can see from our invoices and the mayor signs, all of them, that's been part of the case. We're not dismissing hydrostructures. We wouldn't have the interest in them. Like you said, they're local. They have most of our, our information. And we're going to do it not just because that they're nice, we're going to do it because they're a good firm and they're local. So.
So Summit Engineering is working specifically there, what is it, that they're?
They're performing construction inspection for Chatham Park projects. Capital, new public infrastructure. Public only, not private. That's going to be turned over to town in Pittsburgh.
It's been, there's been growing pains with all of this. I think, I think in terms of working not only with hydrostructures and working with Summit, we've, we're also, you know, and also too, we have on staff our ability to do construction engineering, Commissioner Meyer. They're all kept busy. And when, when, when development is as, as active as it is in this area, you can eventually run out of good construction inspectors. One firm can't always provide you with all of the services, particularly with construction inspectors, because when the economy gets good, those are the people, as well as engineers and in some cases planners, those are the people that all of a sudden start making good money in the private sector. So it becomes difficult, you know, to find good help, so to speak. We've also, I think, had to work with Chatham Park a little bit and tighten up, you know, what, you know, as far as inspection services, what is their responsibility, what is our responsibility? And, you know, and working closer with them to make sure that at the end of the day, we're putting the best possible infrastructure in the ground. And that's our goal. Flat out, that's our goal. And in this case, you know, we, we've been busy enough that it's taken a couple sets of eyes to do it. So we'll, we'll keep working with hydrostructures. That's, you know, that's not going to be, that's not going to be helped in my mind or Fred's mind or anybody as far as this side of it.
But all the Chatham Park projects will go through Summit Engineering, that group?
Currently for the CEI piece, yeah. And that's all branded construction. Hydrostructures in my mind is extremely valuable for the existing infrastructure because they've been working on it for 20 years. So.
And they have civil engineers on the depth too, right?
Yeah.
I think they need.
They have full service, just like Summit.
They need, I mean, they keep, I remember, so they do also.
Well, in this case, the developer is, as you recall, the developer is paying for the cost of the North Side Water System improvements, including elevated tank, which also includes design. But we, we agreed back about a year ago at this time that we needed additional inspection from our standpoint to kind of add another set of eyes, a third party, if you will, on the project to make sure that, you know, from our side, that it was, it was getting done the right way. So bulk of the work and the bulk of the cost in terms of design was provided by Chatham Park. Some inspection will be provided by Chatham Park, but we'll also have an additional layer of inspection that's going to be placed on the project because eventually we'll be taking over this infrastructure after it's built. And so it has to be built to the highest standard. That's going to require Summit, that has required already hydrostructures in terms of the review of those documents and review of those plans. And, you know, it's going to require probably, you know, other consultation before all is said and done, not only the North Side Water System improvements, but, but even the force. So we've got plenty of work to do and plenty of work to go around, so.
Fred had mentioned that hydrostructures is keeping track of all of our existing infrastructure. And I'm assuming correctly if I'm wrong, that as new infrastructure is put in the ground, that ASBIL drawings and data is provided to hydrostructures to keep their models up to date.
Yeah, like the water models.
Yeah.
We're also training Andrew McCray in GIS so we can have a in-house staff person who is capable of pulling up GIS shapefile and looking at sewer and water for our own use so we don't have to continually go outside and pay to have data or maps made or things like that. So we can just get right to it.
Andrew's, you'll see Andrew out exercising valves and hydrants and things like that. So we're kind of not only will have him with a wrench in his hand, but he'll have probably an iPad or a Microsoft Surface or something to the other, you know, looking, looking for all this information that hydrostructures is helping us compile. So.
So the idea is then to get all of that data in-house?
Yeah, it's always a challenge. I mean, you know, it turns, by the, by the time that part of the project rolls around, as you know, the, you know, the ASBILs kind of become the last thing on people's minds. But yeah, it's, you know, since, since Fred has been here, since I've been here, we've, we've worked at, at trying to make sure that we have access to that. And frankly, that's one thing.
And frankly, that's one thing, you know, there has been a challenge that we've had with hydrostructures is getting that out of them, to be perfectly honest. But we'll continue to work at it and we will get it because it's ours, we pay for it and we need that as we maintain infrastructure.
Is Andrew a town employee?
He works for John.
We have the software and hardware to manage all of that.
We're working on both. Our recent AIA grant for 180,000 is going to help pay for our computers. It won't pay for the software, we have to pay for that from other funds. And Andrew's going to be the one operating those computers so he can bring in all the sewer to the whole town and we're going to do condition assessments and prioritization, capital improvement programs for our sewer. I'm really glad he's so excited about this. He's actually, he's really looking forward to moving up the chain, if you will, technical expertise and being involved more than he's been doing it or he's been, he knows all the water systems in town and the sewer systems in town. He's the guy that's been out there turning hydrants for a high amount of years, he's been working here, so.
Well, I've been impressed to see someone, sometimes I'll weed my garden, I'll make a pile on the curb that I'm planning to go pick up somebody with a dropper and pick it up and throw it back in the truck. I'm like, all right, and keeping that stormwater drains open.
Right.
Have a lot of activity right now, too.
Jay, is that it?
No, I just want to, I guess you were aware of that tree that was down there on the bridge way right there, Grove Street.
Yeah, I talked to John about that today. That's another picture we could show you. Sewer pipe just a little bit, like, talking to John, we've got to find a way to probably protect that pipe. He's exposed. Yeah, we've got, we've got them and we've got Tyndall. I imagine Tyndall Tree Company's pretty busy locally right now, too. We've got some, we've got some trees and some other easements that we're taking care of. A lot of those trees fell out on the private property. We're taking the attitude right now that, and probably, you know, I don't want to set, I don't want to set too big of a precedent, but if we've got a tree that fell down from our easement, we got to keep some of these easements clear. So we're cleaning up the tree that fell down on private property. We're doing our best to get it off of private property as well as best as we can. So if anybody does have any issues or problems, let me know and we'll work with them on it. We've had some calls and complaints about, I don't want to say complaints, but we've asked questions. It's going to be case by case basis. We'll do the best we can.
Brad?
I just have one question. What is the process if someone has a town trash can that has got a hole in the bottom leaking?
Call the, just call Cassie.
Okay.
And then we can get it replaced.
Good, thank you.
I did want to say that we have, did we go over the economic development opportunity at Chatham? I didn't remember hearing you.
Just go around a little bit.
It's on Brian.
Well, I've had it on the last three updates, so I have.
I guess, I can't remember if I've responded, so Alice, it's up.
You, I've signed you all up.
Okay.
Anybody that replied to me, I signed them up. If anybody else wants to go that hasn't replied to me, I'm not naming names, let me know and I can be sure. As far as I know, everybody that's replied to me is signed up, registered, you'll be sitting at the same table, or don't.
All right. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Moved by John Vonit, second in our panel involvement. Those in chamber please stand.